So that we have our pins up here.
Excuse me, can I open this?
Yep.
I don't mean to.
Oh, you're fine.
I don't want to jab you.
All for being wound.
Uh, just about two seconds.
Hi, Molly, how are ya? Good, we have a poof of pub. Thank you. Um, Pat, Pat, Pat Hall. Pat Hall, he's in the back there.
Okay.
I'll bring the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners' regular meeting to order for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019. Can we please have a roll call?
We have eleven present and one presiding.
Okay. Please take note. Chief Executive Palmer is at the Montana League of Cities and Towns tonight, so I am acting on his behalf. Commissioner McDonough, would you please lead us in the prayer and the pledge?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on tonight's agenda is any public comment on any items that are on the consent agenda. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, now would be your opportunity. Okay? Ma'am, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record and what communication you're referring to.
My name is Deb Penner.
Can you go to the microphone? Either one, and then on the bottom of that is a button, and it should be on, so.
I've never needed a microphone. So my name is Deb Penner, I live at 1236 West Platinum Street, and I think that there are a lot of people here, this evening, who are here for the same reason that I am, which is to support Councilman Mankins in his, I don't know what the proper word is. Thank you, in his communication regarding the need for a special use permit for certain types of facilities to be in R1 designated zones. So I just wanted to speak and say that I think there's a lot of people that are here tonight for that same purpose.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on any item that's on tonight's agenda? Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jim Downey, 1101 Platinum Street. And I'm in favor of the proposal that Eric is presenting to this committee to keep these houses an R1 so that you can have this residence in it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tracy J. Swanson, 1302 West Platinum. I'm also here to support Mr. Mankins.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Colleen Hackett, and I am at 1107 West Platinum, and I am also here to support Eric's ordinance change.
Colleen Hackett at 1107 West Platinum, I am also here to support Eric's ordinance change.
Okay, thank you. Any other member? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Sarah Dimoni, I'm 1217 West Platinum. As well as a number of the folks here, I too am in support of the ordinance change that our Commissioner Eric has proposed or will be proposing before you. I'd like to speak just for a minute with regard to why the majority, myself and a number of individuals who are also here tonight and not here, why we are in support of this. This ordinance change is asking for a conditional use permit for anybody who receives a license, we understand it's like an ASAM III license from the state of Montana. That allows a group of people, typically a private nonprofit, to go about and buy a home or a dwelling and make it into a group home. And a group home can be for individuals who are in recovery, it can be for disabled individuals, whether it is physical or handicapped mental disability, and there's a couple other reasons, I don't recall all of them. We had an incident that happened in our neighborhood, and we came to our Commissioner and chatted with him about it, and they were wanting to put a halfway house for individuals who were either coming out of treatment for alcohol or drug abuse, and they're in their process of recovery. We spoke with the individuals who are going to do this, and we learned that these individuals who are coming into the home, there would be between five and eight men, who very likely could have felonies behind them, very likely could have misdemeanors, other difficult situations that they've found themselves in that have led to recovery part of their life. We banded together and got together as a neighborhood mainly to say with the neighborhood that we are in, which is an R1, we thought it was not an appropriate use for the home in this neighborhood. This is where we found out that the zoning that has been placed in Butte Silver Bow, because of not having a conditional use permit as part of the zoning, that anyone with this ASAM-III license could move into any neighborhood in any community that does not have in their zoning to have a conditional use permit. The more we started chatting about it, the more we realized this is not just a Platinum Street concern. This is a Butte neighborhood concern. This is all of Butte that could be affected by something like this. So we chatted some more with Eric. Eric said he was going to be putting this before the council, and we strongly support Eric doing this for all of Butte, not just Platinum Street or the Lower West Side. This is for Butte in its entirety as we are one neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Burke, I live at 1222 West Platinum. My wife and I have been in that residence for thirty years, we're kind of the old folks in the neighborhood, and I think Sarah did an excellent job of summing up what the problem is, and I just want to add our support to Eric's proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sterns, please state your name and address for the record.
Josh Sterns, 1040 West Porfree. And I'm coming here as a, not as a police officer or a detective or a former SRO, but as a concerned citizen, for the fact is that I don't have anything against treatment houses, and I know everybody in here probably has been affected somehow or another, a family member through drugs and alcohol. My problem with it is that we need ordinance that Eric is proposing to make sure that we have the right people running these places and they're put in the right part of town. That neighborhood, the west side, I moved there from Floral Park to be up on the west side, because I love that area. It's a great place, there's kids running around every day, safe, it's a safe neighborhood, and I feel like it being in between west and tech is not a good place for that, especially on the street of Platinum where that is the route to West Elementary. You know, I'm not saying that these people are bad or not, I don't know who they are. When I tried to research them, there's nothing on them, so it's hard for me to even know what they are about, because there is nothing about them that I can find, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Colleen Harper, and my address is 1328 West Porfree Street, and I'm here tonight with my husband Wayne, and we just want to state for the record that we also support Eric's proposal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Richardson, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ross Richardson, I live at 1331 Steele. I would agree with what was said earlier, and I am here in support of Commissioner Mankins as well.
Okay, any other comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Aaron McCartney, I'm 1014 West Platinum. I just wanted to put my support for Eric Mankins' proposal. With two young kids in that neighborhood, it's a very tight community, I think it's important to keep that intact and have a safe neighborhood and kind of oversight with these kind of group homes. And to say that having kids and allowing them to run around the neighborhood is really important without having to worry about other people or what's going to be there, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Shane Martin, 1012 West Platinum. Also here to support Eric Mankins' proposal, similar to what everyone else said. Obviously, there's a need for this in the community, but we'd like to be able at least have a discussion before it comes in, where currently we're not able to, it just happens, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, everyone. At this time, I would ask for the approval of the minutes of the September 18th meeting. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I move to approve the minutes from the meeting that occurred on September 18th, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the September 18th meeting. Does anyone have any questions? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
We have eleven yay and zero nay.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Next is items not addressed on the agenda, which we do not have anything to add tonight. The Superfund Report to the Commissioners, being that Chief Executive Palmer's not here, I will forego that. Next is the Chief Executives' Report, I will also skip that as well. I'll move right into bid openings, public hearings, and/or presentations. The first one is a Section 1, which is a petition, Communication Number 19-469. Pat Reardon, Land Systems Administrator, requesting Council Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to approve a petition to close and vacate in Alleyway, which has been filled or filed with the Land Systems Division of the Planning Department, has provided for and within ordinance number 362. This is more of a communication for everybody's information, and we would just refer this to the Public Works Committee for further analysis. Commissioner Shaw, would you like to make that in a form of a motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move to refer Communication 19-469 formally to the Public Works Committee.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Okay, motion passes. Next item is Section 2, which is the Consent Agenda, A, the Committee Reports 1 through 4, and B, Communications 1 through 18. Is there any segregations or friendly amendments? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a friendly amendment on the very last item in the Consent Agenda, number 18. This is Communication 19-484. Dylan Pippenich, Assistant Planning Director, requesting Council Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to review the Thomas Davies Minor Subdivision for compliance with the Montana Subdivision and Plating Act and the Butte Silver Bow Division Regulations. The council shall approve, conditionally approve, or deny the subdivision based on the written findings of fact. There, we're missing the recommendation, and that recommendation should be concur and place on file.
Okay, thank you, friendly amendment noted. Any other segregations? Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to segregate Communication Number 9, 14-475, and 13, 19-479.
Just so we're on the same page, that was Number 9, 19-475, and Number 13, 19-479?
Correct.
Okay. Any other segregations? Commissioner Fredrickson?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan, I would like to segregate Number 3, Communication Number 19-467.
Okay. Any other segregations? Okay, seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the Section 2 Consent Agenda, A, 1 through 4, and B, 1 through 18, with the exception of Item Number 3, 19-467, Item Number 9, 19-475, and Item Number 13, 19-479.
Okay. Okay, there's been a motion made. Second. Seconded by Commissioner McDonough. Is there anything on the question? Okay, would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. First communication that was segregated is Number 3, Communication 19-467. Sean Fredrickson, Commissioner District 1, requesting Council Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to consider creating guidelines for short-term vacation rentals within Butte Silver Bow. Commissioner Fredrickson?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan, I just wanted to clarify on that communication that I am not wanting to authorize the Chief Executive to consider creating the guidelines, that I want this body to create the guidelines. And so, as we move forward with this, if you have any questions, let me know, and I'm looking forward to us putting our heads together and coming up with a solution for this, so, thank you, and I'll make a motion that I refer to Judiciary Committee.
Okay. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to refer this communication to the Judiciary Committee. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Before I record that vote, Commissioner Fredrickson, if it would be all right with you, I would like to change the title to be Sean Fredrickson, Commissioner District Number 1, requesting Council Commissioners consider creating guidelines for short-term vacation rentals on the next following agenda items.
Sure, would you like that in the form of a motion?
If you would just.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we correct the communication to say Sean Fredrickson, Commissioner District Number 1, requesting Council Commissioners authorize, consider creating guidelines for short-term vacation rentals within Butte Silver Bow.
Okay. Thank you. That motion has been made and seconded, and also refer it to the Judiciary Committee. Is there any questions on the motion that is before you? The motion that you're voting on right now refers Communication 19-467 to the Judiciary Committee and amends the title on the agenda. Okay, would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Next item on tonight's agenda is Number 9, has a segregation, Communication 19-475. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to sign a Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, DNRC Renewable Resource Grant and Loan, RRGL Program Project Planning Grant Application. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chairman. The reason why I segregated this communication is, is that I had a couple of questions about this grant. First off, in our agenda, when you click on the link to it, there is no grant there, so we'd be, in a sense, voting on a grant that we cannot see or look at, so, being as I have no idea what's on it, being as I believe nobody on this body has an idea what's on it, or if they do, if they could share it with us so that we might be able to make a more informed decision. In lieu of that, what I would like to do is hold this for a week, till which time we can get the grant attached to this and vote on it after we have seen it.
Oh. Can I answer a few of your questions?
Absolutely.
I hope so. I hope so, too, so.
Please state your name and address, sir.
I'm 1215 West Side Boulevard, and I'm the chief operator for the water. Could you? Thank you. Need a do-over on that?
Please do.
Okay. My name is Jim Keenan, I live at 1215 West Side Boulevard, and I'm the chief operator for the water utility here in Butte. And I don't know if I understand exactly what your question is, you guys don't have a copy of the grant application?
Correct.
Okay, shilly cleverly.
Just so you know, Mr. Keenan, the, there is a copy of the agreement, it's just not on the website, if you click on the link, it doesn't show up, but we do have a copy of it in the office, so, he just wasn't able to review it at this time.
All right.
So.
So, do you need an explanation? This grant application is due by October 10th, because it's awarded, I believe, on October 20th, so we need to make sure that we get council's approval to submit this grant application, so there's a little bit of a time crunch to get this done, so I need to make sure that I get you any information you need so that we can proceed and get this application in by the 10th of October, so, what can I do to help you out?
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Looking at the communication that was written with this under, now I can't pull up the communication. I was hoping for the body, but, excuse me, I'm having a little bit of trouble with the computer here, but it looked like, could you tell us what's in the grant, what it's about?
Yeah, just click right.
Just, it looked like it was for DNRC, $8,000 to cover the cost of contracting an outside consultant for an in-depth concrete inspection, supply detailed findings and make recommendations to require repair for the Basin Creek Dam, Number 1.
Right.
Mr. Keenan?
Yeah, so as you may or may not know, Basin Creek Dam, Number 1, is classified as a high-hazard dam by the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. Because of that high-hazard designation, it has to be inspected by a professional engineer at least every five years. We just had the inspection done in July of this year, and we just got the report from the engineer this week, and they identified several issues with the concrete lift of the dam. The original construction was done in the late 1800, and it's all granite block construction that's mortared together, and it's very sound, but then in 1913, they added 13 feet of concrete to the top of the dam. Well, that top 13 feet is in very bad shape, and it's deteriorating pretty quickly, so that deterioration was identified in the latest engineer's report, and the Montana DNRC comments on that latest report have identified that as something that we need to begin to do something about right away, we need to. Their concern is the top several feet of that dam could fail in the event of an extreme storm event, and that would be a really, a really big deal if that happened, so they want us to begin figuring out what we're going to do about it, and they suggested that we pursue this RRGL grant for the amount of $8,000 to bring in a concrete expert. Hopefully, get that done sometime in November, and get their report by the end of the year so we can apply for a second grant in January to hire an engineer to prepare a technical narrative, so, I don't know if I answered your question or not.
A good portion of it, so it is.
Mr. Anderson? Go ahead.
Did you have?
Nope. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson, and then I'll.
Thank you. So it is a rather time-sensitive person, there is no matching funds or any costs, other costs associated with this grant than?
No, no, there's no matching funds required with this grant, and I think the grant would probably, you know, based on my conversations with one of the engineers at DNRC, would probably cover pretty much all the costs associated with this study.
Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Fisher, did you have anything to add?
It was brought to my attention by Commissioner Sturridge, if you push on the link that shows the communication, it pretty well explains, it don't actually show the grant, but explains everything about it and the amount of money and everything in it.
Yes, I saw that, so I was just kind of concerned about the other.
Commissioner Anderson?
At this time, what I would do is make a motion that we do approve for this grant, being as it is in a time-sensitive matter, and I would also ask that the Council Secretary, if you could please forward a copy of it to myself and the council as a whole, if you would.
And will you put that in the form of a motion, please, and place on file?
So I'd make a motion that we concur and place this on file.
Okay, second. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to concur with that communication and place it on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Thank you, motion passes. For those of you that are in the audience, just so everybody is aware, Commissioner Mankins' is, Communication 19-466 had a recommendation to refer to the Planning Department, so that is where it's going, it won't be, it wasn't segregated at this time, so we won't discuss any of that for the rest of the night, I just wanted you guys to be aware of that as we proceed, so. Next item is segregated item number 13, Communication 19-479. Which is Communication Number 19-479, Lori Casey, Planning Director, requesting Council Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to repeal all sections of Chapter 15.18, the Electrical Code of Butte Silver Bow, Montana Municipal Code for Section 15.18.030, electrical wiring permit required. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I had some concerns about what this could potentially lead to being decertified with this, is this part of the building code? I don't know an awful lot about it, but being decertified in this, how would that affect insurance rates for different homes being built or businesses? What does that do to liability and other issues?
Ms. Buffet?
Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Anderson and other commissioners, I don't know how to answer that question. This is really about the state on, I believe, July 15th or June 15th, took over the inspections of the electrical in Butte Silver Bow, and this change in the ordinance is to comply with state law, and we had a lengthy phone conversation with the electrical inspectors with the state, and they suggested we needed to go ahead and repeal this, we're going to be doing other work on this ordinance, but they are, the state is now doing the electrical inspection, so inspections still are happening, it's just done by the state of Montana, not by the city and county of Butte Silver Bow.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you for that. It also says here in addition, I would request that they retroactively repeal all inspections that are conducted by the state. How does that work?
Well, there is a, excuse me, Commissioner Anderson and commissioners, there was a number of inspections that were already permitted with Butte Silver Bow, and we need to have that retroactive so we can catch those permits within the new law. Because there was permits outstanding that had come in and paid the fee to, for the inspection, so that's what that's all about.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sorej.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you tell me if the wages are still going to be paid by the state of Montana, or are they going to be paid through Butte Silver Bow for this inspector?
Ms. Maffey.
You know, Commissioner Sorej, I don't know the answer to that question, we did not have any discussion about wages. You know, we do charge for our electrical permits, I don't know, it could be if the Budget Director may know if that money goes into the general fund, I really am not able to answer that question.
So, Chairman Morgan, commissioners, just to add a little bit of the information that I know about this, is we no longer have the position internally, but does that work? And so, in the process of transitioning, we will no longer collect the fees, but the state assumes the responsibilities for all costs associated with it.
Molly, I just have one question for you, in regards to this, if this body does concur and places communication on file, what is the next step? Is there going to be an ordinance change that's going to come before us?
Commissioner Morgan, there will be an ordinance change that'll come before you, we're going to be having to go through that entire ordinance, I believe, and make changes to it, but the state urged us to start first, so that we're in conformance with Montana law, that was very important to them when we spoke with them a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan, I guess this isn't a question, because we don't have Lori here tonight, or I don't, but if we pass this, does it have any implications to businesses that apply for the license outside of just paying the fee and having it inspected? Does it delay projects from taking place? I mean, have we seen a lag in the response from Helena to come into Butte and inspect projects, or are they timely and responsive? Because we hear comments from folks that, you know, if they have to go through the process, they'd rather not do business in Butte Silver Bow, you know, I mean, we're always concerned about our permitting process, we get them in the process and move them through, and I think we do a great job, but is this going to slow down project times or developments that would be a deterrent to potential developers or projects that would come online? I mean, that's my concern.
Commissioner McDonough, as I understand it, they do have a response time that they're supposed to follow, I do not believe it's going to be as quickly as a response time as the local electrical inspector, but I don't understand it to be weeks and days and days and days, it's within a 48-hour period, I believe, that they were supposed to respond.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Anderson, what would be your, or any other commissioner?
Thank you for your reply. I guess with that being said, I look forward to seeing the rest of this, and I'd go ahead and concur and place on file, thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded by Commissioner Shaw to concur and place this communication on file. Does any other commissioner have any questions? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. I believe that takes care of all of our segregations, we'll move right into Section 3, which is communications to be read and acted upon. First one is Communication Number 19-471. Pat Holland, Government Buildings Manager, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to allow a bid opening on October 2nd, 2019, regarding the Butte Silver Bow Courthouse and LEA boiler replacement. Ms. Maffey, is there proof of publication?
Chairman Morgan, there is proof of publication, and it is in order from the Montana standard.
Okay, thank you. Oh, can you please turn on your microphone? There you go.
Members of the commission, we've received one bid in regards to the change of the courthouse The bid is from Lockmore Plumbing and Heating and Utilities Incorporated, 401 South Main Street, Butte, Montana, and the proposal is for $105,325, 105325.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holland, does that conclude all the bids?
It does.
Okay, does any commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Mr. Holland, did we have any, an engineer's estimate on this?
No, we don't, as it is a repair, it's not a, it's a replacement, not a new boiler. Commissioner Dan.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Pat, do we have a timeframe when Lockmore can get to this project?
There's no timeframe mentioned in here, but we're hoping, in regards to that, the people I talked to said they would get right on it, but the boiler itself is, could be out up to six weeks for them to manufacture it.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sorej.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Up to six weeks, is that potentially, we won't have heat in here for six weeks?
No, this is one of two boilers that we have in the courthouse at this time, Commissioner Sorej, so we will have redundancy as far as keeping heat on in the courthouse.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to refer this singular request to the Facilities Management Manager, I guess it looks like it's the Department of the Emergency Management Department, for their review and report back to this body.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded, is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Thank you, motion passes. Next section is Section 4, Ordinances and Resolutions Referred to Judiciary. Please take note that Resolution 19-61 goes to Judiciary Committee. Section 5, which is ordinances and resolutions for final reading, first one is Council Resolution Number 19-58. Would the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 19-58, a resolution authorizing the sole source purchase of nine express boat marking devices for the city, county of Butte Silver Bow, Montana, BSB, Clerk and Recorders, Election Administration, and providing for an effective date herein.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to place Council Resolution Number 19-58 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded, would everyone, does anyone have any questions? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Next is Council Resolution 19-59, would the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 19-59, a resolution of intent to declare the day after Thanksgiving as a legal holiday for the city, county of Butte Silver Bow, Montana, in exchange for the not observing Columbus Day as a legal holiday, and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Shaw.
I move to place Resolution Number 19-59 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded, is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Okay, would the clerk please record the vote?
Okay, we have seven yay and four nay.
Okay, motion passes. Section, whoops, yes, Section 6, Suspension of the Rules for Final Passage, we have a couple of them, Council Resolution 19-60 and 19-62. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing Council Resolutions 19-60 and 19-62 by waiving subsection 7 of Rule 36 of the Rules and Order of Business of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded, is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? This is a motion to suspend the rules to, for these two communications. Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Okay, motion passes. First one, Council Resolution 19-60, would the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 19-60, a resolution authorizing and approving the sale of certain parcels of tax-dated real property owned by city and county of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, and providing for an effective date herein.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move to place Council Resolution Number 19-60 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded, is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Okay, motion passes. Next is Council Resolution 19-62, would the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 19-62, a resolution establishing the assessment for fiscal year 2020 on the properties included in Special Tourism Business Improvement District, Number 1, which was established in 2011 for the purpose of promoting tourism conventions, trade shows, and travel to the city, county of Butte Silver Bow, Montana, and providing for an effective date herein.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move to place Council Resolution Number 19-62 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded, is there anything on the question? Okay, would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yay and zero nay.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Next on the agenda is any public comment on any public matter that's not on tonight's agenda? If there's any member of the public that would like to speak on any item that's not on tonight's agenda, now would be your opportunity. Okay, I would ask that you take a look at the calendar of other meetings and events, and Commissioner Shaw.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, or, yeah, motion passes, have a good night, everyone.